Okay, so we're gonna move on with public comment. Ms. Rallo, how many public speakers do we have this evening?
I'm still counting, but we have at least...
More than the room can hold.
At least sixty, but I'll give you a final count in a minute.
Okay. So this evening, to help move things along, we will call not only the speaker, but we will also call the following speaker. So if you hear yourself as the next speaker, if you could just make your way to the aisle over there and just stand maybe a few feet behind the speaker who's at the podium, just to prepare yourself to come up next.
Can I say something?
Yes.
So I just got notified by someone who is outside of the building that even though they're pre-registered to speak, they are not being allowed to come into the building.
Are we at a capacity issue?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so how many people are out there? About forty.
They were told that no matter how many people leave, they will not be allowed to come in.
Yeah, we need to fix that.
We do.
So we can do this, is there a process to where if someone leaves after their comment, we could let someone in? Okay. I think it's a... Yeah. We need a bigger boardroom next time. Okay, so is there a process then, so has anyone outside registered or have they not registered? They have registered, okay. So please bear with us, this is a little unprecedented, but we're gonna try to get everyone outside that's in here somehow.
They need to know, though.
Yeah, if, so if we can send someone out there and just have them bear with us while we work through this, it might be a little bit of time because it might be a long night. That would be great, okay? And then we'll see, once we get through, how many folks that we can actually get in here, if not, we'll have to figure something out at that point, okay? All right, so please read this evening's Rules of Order.
Good evening. I'm DJ Ravage, Regional Coordinator for the Office of Safety and Security. Thank you for attending tonight's Board of Education Business Meeting. In keeping with the business purpose of the meeting, I would like to share updated practices that will be enforced this evening and for all future board meetings. During the business meeting, all attendees are reminded to conduct themselves in a respectful manner. Grandstanding, which includes applause, audible commentary, excessive gestures, standing ovations, and similar distracting behaviors, is not permitted. Likewise, threatening words, gestures, or behaviors are not permitted. We ask the comment... Correction. We ask the commenters refrain from identifying individuals who are members of the public and do not sit on the board. While it is acceptable to address board members directly, it is preferred that individuals do not identify others, as this could be construed as a personal attack, which is prohibited. We appreciate your understanding and are committed to ensuring a respectful and constructive dialogue in our meetings. Please feel free to reach out if you have any further concerns or need additional support. Should an attendee engage in one of the prohibited behaviors, thus detracting from the business purpose of this meeting, the attendee will receive a warning to immediately cease the prohibited behavior. If the attendee does not cease the prohibited behavior, the attendee will be escorted from the business meeting by security. We appreciate your respectful attendance and participation and look forward to a productive meeting, thank you.
Thank you very much. We've already removed one item, one business item, to allow further public comment today, but we still do have to vote and have discussions and have presentations on the curriculum, so we do have business to do after this. So in-person speakers will be called by the Board Secretary. All speakers will receive two minutes to speak this evening, and that's whether you're an individual or whether you're a group. Speakers may be interrupted and may be given notice when they have thirty seconds left. When speakers reach their two-minute mark, their time will expire. Ms. Rallo, please begin with in-person speakers.
This evening, we will begin with Mr. Christopher Providence, followed by Kareem Wallace. If Kareem Wallace is here, can you please wait behind this first speaker? Kareem Wallace? Is there a Kareem? He's outside?
Just put a check next to that one, we'll come back to that person and then move on to the next one for the next speaker.
So the next speaker would be Joakim Rising. Joakim Rising? Michael Echett? Is there a Michael Echett? Allison Neuberger?
Some people may have signed up in advance as well and may not be here, I don't know.
Amber Milns?
Is she, I think, is that her? Okay, all right. Yes, sir, thank you, you may proceed.
Good evening Superintendent Bullson and members of the board, my name is Christopher Providence, I'm a retired educator and I live in Havity Grace. For too long, history has been taught only from a European perspective. Inclusive history is important because it teaches us about the contributions, achievements, and struggles of all Americans, and it gives us the opportunity to learn from different perspectives. Sometimes that history is painful and uncomfortable, but it reflects the truth of our history, both good and bad. Part of that truth is understanding how the legacy of enslavement and Jim Crow continues to impact us today in 2024. During the previous board meeting, five of you voted to reject the AP African American Studies elective course against the recommendations of the superintendent, and despite the fact that the course was successfully implemented, has received overwhelmingly positive feedback, more than a hundred students have already registered to take the course, and additional schools have expressed interest in the course. Plus, if we drop the course, we'll lose a lot of money in funding. And why did you vote no? Reasons we heard, no access to the proposed curriculum, concerns about the content, the quality of the curriculum, it's too political, it promoted terrorism as a form of activism, it reflected a severe progressive agenda, information was biased and divisive, it pits Americans against Americans, and you said you wanted to see more balance and more positive messages. What's disturbing about your objections is that they're highly subjective and they appear to be based not on objective data, but on personal opinions and grievances, bias, discomfort with ideas and perspectives, different from your own, and your religious and political beliefs. I saw this great quote last night, "Most people don't use facts to form their opinions, they use their opinions to form their facts." And to be frank, I don't think you have the qualifications, backgrounds, or cultural sensitivity to tell the African-American community which parts of our history should and should not be taught.
Thank you, sir.
I urge you to...
Thank you, sir. Thank you. Thank you. Good, okay. Just a couple of housekeeping things, we do have to stick to the two-minute time limit, so if you could just adjust your, if you prepared a three-minute speech, it's gonna have to be two minutes, I'm sorry. And also, there's no grandstanding, which includes clapping or things like that, so the presenters are also to speak to the board. Who's next?
Ms. Amber Milns.
Good evening, I am Amber Milns, proud teacher at Aberdeen High School. I am here to speak on the reason vote to block the offering of AP African American Studies. While I appreciate that the board has taken a more active position in their role, I urge you to recall the vote and table it until you can provide actual concrete evidence-based observations on how exactly the course does not meet universal standards. Having a standard requires you to have experience, professional and personal, in the content or subject area, which those of you that voted against it lack. Black history is American history, period. Black Americans have been just as integral in the formation of America and our democracy, but through forced means like trafficking and slavery. American history is one that is full of unsavory and unpleasant actions by our collective ancestors. Slavery, the three-fifths compromise, manifest destiny, Trail of Tears, reservations, Jim Crow, Emmett Till, Japanese internment camps, the Truman Doctrine, and the Marshall Plan, the Little Rock Nine, they all happened. Should we remove all teaching of these events to make white America look better? This country has a long history of hatred and marginalization alongside democracy that claims to be for life, liberty, and the pursuit of happiness. Even black Americans were able, like Wentworth Cheswell, he used his lighter skin tone and took that advantage to identify as white on his census so he could serve as the first black American in our government in the seventeen hundreds. When you were elected or appointed to this board, you repeatedly said you wanted to improve the quality of education, improve academic success, and allow for parental choice. To date, five of you have consistently voted in a manner that is in direct conflict of your words. Since your arrival, you've voted for a later start date, which reduces instructional days before high-stakes testing, convened a book committee, attempted to force a flag policy, voted against an elective AP course, not based on actual evidence, but talking points plagiarized from Ron DeSantis and the State of Florida's handbook.
Thank you.
Next, we have Devon DeFord, followed by Derek Mall.
Who's next?
Derek DeFord is first. I mean, I'm sorry, Devon.
You can begin.
Okay, cool. So as a former Aberdeen High School student who's taken AP US History and African American History, shout out to Mr. Mobley, if he still teaches at Aberdeen High School, I know the difference between American history from the white perspective and from the African-American perspective. And I would also like to point out to one of the Board Committee members who call African American history Strauss, who said it's divisive, I don't know how black history is divisive when it's a part of history as a whole. I like to think that trying to find a common solution based on what you guys deem as like appropriate teaching is based on your political ideology, it's not based in facts. And I'd also like to talk to the point that, sorry, that you guys really just didn't put an effort into actually trying to look at the curriculum you guys basis on a disingenuous point of view by saying, and I quote from Terry Cocker, that "The course failed to illustrate the headway that's been made, you said it paints activism a point that perpetuates victim mentality." African American history is not victim mentality, first of all, I find it very offensive as a black person, so for you to say that, that means you didn't take enough consideration to thinking what the course actually teaches, because if you would, you would've thought there was no way possible for you to come with that conclusion. And just the derogatory comments you made that we have towards the police, that was a statement you made in an interview, Cocker, so just the board members who claim to like look at the curriculum, their statements say otherwise. You have the President of the Board who says like, the curriculum refers to it as terrorism, and I challenge you to find where in the curriculum it says that, because it only refers to the KKK as a terrorist group, so you're perpetuating right-wing talking points, and I don't think you have the best interest in Hartford County students. And for you to sit here and say we need to be unified, when you already chosen a side, because if the Moms of Liberty group is on your side supporting the African-American like history drop, then you're on the wrong side of history, and time will tell that. Thank you.
All right, we have to stick by the rules of no clapping, no grandstanding, thank you.
Good evening, my name is Derek Mall, I'm a retired United States Army veteran of twenty-six years and a retired United States government civilian. I have worked in the Hartford County community since 2003 and lived in the Hartford County since 2014. I recently learned of the decision by the Hartford County Board of Education to remove AP African American History from the curriculum of the Hartford County school system. Up until now, I have not been involved in any aspect of local government business anywhere I've lived or worked. The recent decision by the Hartford County Board of Education has prompted and ignited a sincere desire to be more involved due to the severity of the decision to remove AP African American History from the curriculum and the comments made by several board members. The reasoning quoted by several board members does not represent past, present, or future realities in our lives as Americans, not just African-Americans. Board member Ms. Terry Cocker is quoted by several local news organizations stating of AP American History, and I quote, "The topics are heavily politically oriented, perpetuate the message of oppressed versus oppressor. I didn't find positive messages that weren't overwhelmed by negative messages." Additionally, Ms. Cocker is quoted stating, "I think we're missing an opportunity to present positive messages of unity and great American contributions." Ms. Cocker, you are correct in some of your statements, the history of African-Americans is one of oppressed versus the oppressor. As sad as it may seem, this is reality. History should be and is a lesson of past mistakes and gives us the ability to present solutions for future progress. The positive message you are seeking is found not in removing the curriculum, the positive message is found in educating future generations of same mistakes and atrocities.
Thank you, sir.
My solemn request of this body is to restore the AP African American curriculum, thank you for your attention and time.
Thank you.
Next, we have Jim Thornton, followed by David Marshall. Is David Marshall here? You can go ahead.
Good evening to all present. The decision not to offer the course, the AP Black History course next year is of great disdain to me. I want to quote a few board members, Board Member Terry Cocker voted against the course saying, "We need an AP African American course, but this is not it. I didn't find positive messages that weren't overwhelmed by the negative messages, so I think we're missing an opportunity to present positive messages of unity and great American contributions." Lauren Page Strauss then said, another, another board member stated, "I spent a lot of time reviewing this curriculum, I think there's a lot of good, solid education components, but I am struggling over the divisiveness and some of this content that some of this content could cause." Then we had someone on the other side, thank God for that, Carol Bruce voting to keep the class saying, "For us to keep saying we don't want it because it's political, I think is unfair and short-sighted. It's pitting African-Americans against non-African-Americans because we want to speak up to say we want history taught." I want to first address all of those who have expressed their lack of interest in this course. Both of you, all of you intimated that the course is in some way negative and divisive. Well, the reality of the history of blacks in America is unfortunately quite negative and divisive. Let me give you a little historical context to support this. Many consider a significant starting point to slavery in America to be in sixteen nineteen, when the white lion brought twenty enslaved Africans ashore to then British, to then British colony of Jamestown, Virginia. Slavery was considered one of the greatest atrocities in history, this was a forced movement that went on for over two hundred years. According to Digital History, ten to fifteen percent of the ten to fifteen million Africans transported across the Atlantic died during the Middle Passage. Slaves were punished for not working fast enough for being late... Oh, there's so much more to be said, but...
Thank you. I will, I will, I'm sorry, call the next person and I'll give a free comment.
Is Jim Thornton in now? So our next two are Cassandra Beverly, followed by Cheryl Love.
I will say that if you cannot get everything through in two minutes, you're also welcome to email your entire statement to the board.
Well, I certainly can't, we, I remember that a group, I was told it was gonna be five minutes, and now I've gotta smash it down. You should've put that on the website so I could've had an alternative speech. Good evening Superintendent Board Chair Boynton and members of the Board of Education, my name is Cassandra Beverly, I'm Chair of the Hartford County Caucus of African American Leaders. I'm also one of the first prior elected members of this board. We are a group of community leaders that includes clergy, business owners, and others who share a commitment to advocating for equity, fairness, and inclusion for African-Americans in this county. I'm here to express our profound disappointment over your decision not to give the AP African American History course regular status for the upcoming year and to urge you to re-vote on this matter. Hartford County has a well-documented history of dragging its feet when it comes to the education of students of color. It's my understanding that approximately a hundred students had expressed an interest in taking the course. I imagine that a majority of those students are students of color. Now, once again, Hartford County is at the forefront of denying those students the opportunity to receive their knowledge of the history of African-Americans in this country and to develop critical thinking skills because some of you believe that there were not enough positive messages in the curriculum. I find it astonishing that someone can believe that there's a positive way to tell the truth about slavery, Jim Crow, segregation, and decades of discriminatory practices. You propose that the curriculum be revised to provide more positive messages and to be less divisive. This appears to be a request to whitewash the truth and paint a picture that I call happy Negroes and benevolent white folks. Now, because I have to shorten this, I oppose your appointment to this board, Dr. Boynton. Once we learn at the caucus of your connections with Ron DeSantis, we believe that you and others on this board were going to import the practices from Florida. We oppose them and we urge you to re-vote on this issue.
Cheryl Love. Do we have a Susie Scott? Susie Scott? Followed by Emile Cromwell?
Okay. The AP African American Studies course that was denied at the last board meeting has become a lightning rod of contention for certain members of this community. By utilizing the activist tactics laid out in that course, these disgruntled people have taken actions that will only further inflame the situation. Instead of working as a group of dedicated professionals and adults, I'm seeing angry social media posts full of misinformation, threatening letters demanding action, and denigrating school board officials for doing their job, one-sided media articles, and Zoom calls meant to agitate and kindle an emotional response from our students. The five members that voted no to that AP course gave specific invalid reasons for their concerns. The highly politicized nature of that course is not appropriate content for high school students. Please note that this specific course has been rejected by numerous states and school boards across the nation because of its skewed and politically biased content. The false narrative that's being perpetrated on our students is that we are, everything has to be viewed through an equity lens, and it asserts an ideological narrative that America is a fundamentally racist country. This is causing real harm. Look at the results, a divided nation, a generation of youth with crippling mental health issues, and a hostile school environment. This is not what the citizens of this county or our country voted for. So what should be the proper course of action? How do we solve this problem before us like civilized adults? HCPS employs a coterie of curriculum specialists and national board-certified teachers, do you not? Are they not capable of crafting an African American history course that would steer clear of the radical politics of this highly controversial AP course? Did not the board members who rejected this specifically flawed curriculum say several times at the last meeting that they want to see an African American Studies course in HCPS? Yes, they did. Let's make that happen.
Good evening. My name is Mr. Emile Cromwell. I was born and raised in Havity Grace, Maryland. I'm a nineteen sixty-one graduate of Havity Grace Consolidated School, since renamed Roy Wims Elementary School. I am an advocate for the reconsideration to offer the AP African American Studies course within all high schools and Hartford County public schools. AP African American History is of value to all students for the following reasons. Number one, the AP African American Studies course will assist in negating harmful narratives that are perpetrated, giving students an unenhanced understanding of the pain and suffering in American racial history. Number two, the participants explore pertinent topics that extend from early African kingdoms to ongoing challenges and achievements to the present time. Number three, it examines the diversity of African-American experiences through direct encounters with rich and varied sources. Number four, finally, African American Studies is meant for everyone. Dr. John Henry Clark, renowned African-American historian, is quoted as saying, "History is not everything, but it is a starting point. History is a clock that people use to tell their political and cultural time of day. It is a compass that they use to find themselves on the map of human geography." Thank you.
Next, next we have Erica Richardson, followed by Lisa Stonem. Is Erica Richardson here? Lisa Stonem? Leah Lucas? She'll be followed by David Bauer?
Good evening, board members, my name is Leah Lucas, and I'm a rising senior and current student government president for Aberdeen High School. I've come today to elevate the voices of my peers, classmates, and friends regarding AP African American Studies course approval. Honestly, I never thought that this topic would require advocacy, due to all the authentic, positive feedback and interest I personally heard last year. The teacher of my US History class also taught AP African American Studies last year, and he was fantastic. We as a class were able to have very meaningful conversations that genuinely helped me understand and learn about the United States history. When I reached out to students who took the course last year, many of them rising first-year college students are planning to join the US Armed Services, I did not hear a single negative aspect about the course. Conversely, the students expressed their appreciation for the opportunity to learn about leaders more in-depth who previously were only briefly mentioned in their required courses. In fact, many of the students told me that the course taught them about their roots, identity, and who they want to be as a person, in ways that other history classes could not. Even though the board assumes that this curriculum will introduce uncomfortable conversations, these are the conversations that are beneficial for the student body to have in a safe and credible environment. Without this reputable source of information, students will have no choice but to turn to their own resources, like TikTok. You have hired and trained teachers in this county, now it's time for you to trust them. I felt the need to speak up today because I would pray that you would realize that this course is way more than just a curriculum. It's the opportunity for students of Hartford County to advance in their education. As an AP course, it increases their chances of earning scholarships, college acceptance, and GPA. Additionally, if the students transfer this credit, they will be directly lowering the cost for their college. Furthermore, this rigor of this course will help the students be more college and career-ready. Withholding this resource robs our students, robs our families, and robs our community of healthy and inclusive and diverse conversation. Thank you for your time.
Next, we have William Martino, followed by Timothy Manning.
Good evening. Several years ago, I had a family member who completed a child psychology course at a university. The approved textbook for the course stated that five percent of issues impacting children are LGBT-related. The instructor chose to focus the entire semester on that five percent, ignoring all other factors affecting minors, such as physical abuse, sexual assault, poverty, neglect, and other environmental factors. This was clearly done to cultivate a radical LGBT philosophy in the students. The AP course material on tonight's agenda is designed to do the same thing. Teaching African American history and women's studies is necessary to give our past historical patriots, civil rights icons, scientists, and political leaders the credit they are due. However, the courses pushed by today's universities are filled with radical activist ideology that zooms in on the worst parts of our history, only to foster dangerous worldviews. When the students don't have a solid foundation on all the historical facts, they become easy prey for activist professors. US History is complex and has had its share of righteous and unrighteous moments. This curriculum cherry picks the bad to promote a philosophy of hatred, division, and entitlement. This is a one-sided view of our past. We keep hearing that the AP course was put together by experts at the college level, and we must support their curriculum. The same universities today have disgraceful anti-Semitic demonstrations going on all over the country. This radical material is destroying our once prestigious universities and have turned them into green-and-white tent cities full of radical kaffir-wearing activists that hate America... America and hate the Jewish people. HCPS does not need to be a participant in this process. Stay firm in your duties to teach academic education and refuse to participate in activism. Thank you.
Timothy Manning.
Hello. My name is Tim Manning, AKA OneOfThesePeople, and I live in Abingdon. As of May, I no longer have any children attending public school in Hartford County, but I still care deeply about the quality of education and educational opportunities made available to our student population. Therefore, I'm here to support and personally demand the board reverse their decision of rejecting AP African American Studies. I find your rejection as dismissive, disappointing, and divisive in its own right. Your excuses that the topics are politically oriented, perpetrate the message of the oppressed versus their oppressor, and that the positive messages are overwhelmed by negative messages are extremely weak and personally opinionated. Let me share something with you. It has been, and it still is, extremely hard to grow up in America as an African American, when votes such as this continue to try to undermine the truth and eliminate representative educational opportunities. Let's keep in mind, folks, this is not a black course. This is not a radical course or a course with a hidden agenda. I don't know what you five are so afraid of. People of all backgrounds want to take this course, and they will benefit greatly. I took a similar course during my college journey while I served as active duty for 24 years in the Air Force, as did a white colleague of mine with differing opinions and backgrounds. I learned so much about myself and my people, as did he. It didn't make me hate. It allowed me to learn more about the struggles and contributions of my people in America. He had more questions than excuses now. I developed even more self-pride, and it continued to make me a better human being. It was rewarding because it represented me, and it made me want to learn even more as a college student. It made me more accountable to my own contributions as an African American, and I wish I had access to this course earlier in my own public schools. Although it hurts to learn of the often untaught and unspeakable horrors of the past and about the countless accomplishments, contributions, and interventions that have been discredited as someone else's or not recognized at all, the facts are, and the whys must be addressed, acknowledged, and analyzed by our young minds. I'll leave you with this: Those who don't learn from history are doomed to repeat it. Those who prevent history from being taught fully intend to repeat it.
Next, we have Erica Richardson, followed by David Bauer.
Good evening. My name is Erica Richardson, and I am the proud 2024 Teacher of the Year for Hartford County Public Schools. I take pride in being a woman, and I take pride in being an African-American woman. I understand that my perspectives may differ from others because of my past experiences. I think about experiences that my mother, my grandmother, and older relatives have endured and experienced, especially my grandmother, who was born and raised in Charleston, South Carolina. Her and my grandfather had 10 children, 32 grandchildren, and many, many great-grandchildren. My grandfather passed away some years ago, but my grandmother is very much alive. She is 104 years old. I can't imagine the stories that she could tell. I can't imagine the experiences and the things that she had to endure. I think about her every day, every decision that I make, every time I want to improve or look to have some kind of input in my decision-making. She is my motivation. I cannot express to you the importance of having this course at our schools. Joppetown High School, which is the school I'm from, is a school, one of the schools that had that pilot program. My former principal, Ms. Pamela Ziegler, and I discussed it, decided that it would be a great idea to have this experience for our mariners. We have a very experienced veteran teacher to provide this information to our students, and we also have the resources to allow our students to be successful. Please, give our students the opportunity to achieve this success. This course provides facts. This course allows for both sides to be heard, many perspectives. It also allows our students to continue to be brilliant as they are. Please, do not stand in the way of education. Please, work with us to help it be successful.
Good evening. I'm David Bauer, and this evening I'm going to be speaking extemporaneously. I'll email you my prepared remarks, but they don't fit in this time limit. Previously, I commented that some of you came into this office seemingly with the mission to conquer the school district and not to understand it. You've again demonstrated that. You came in, some of you appointed, some elected, and you seem to have come in with this prejudice about what the school system was like. And as you've discussed curriculum over the past year, we've actually seen kind of a moving of the goalposts. You're complaining about things like what links are, what resources are linked to in the supplementary material. You're complaining about things like talking about human-caused global warming. I've got news for you. That is reality that has been the position of the US and the vast majority of the world since before your students were born. That is the world we live in. History is not always pretty. It's not always uplifting. That is the world we live in. So, to the five of you who caused this great crowd this evening, you messed up again. This isn't the first time. So I hope that you will take a step in the right direction this evening to correct it. Thank you all.
Next, I have Celeste Harris, followed by Eva Fitzgerald. Is there Eva Fitzgerald?
We created a holding room upstairs, so they'll hopefully be able to come down when we are no longer at capacity. But just keep going and take a mark for now.
Genesis Scott, followed by Melissa Williams.
Good evening. My name is Genesis Scott, and I'm actually a scholar, a legal scholar, of one of the nation's top Ivy League institutions of Cornell Law School, and I'm also head of minor in African American Studies. And I just wanted to say, I went to Aberdeen High School, and there wasn't AP African American History, but there was African American History, and it was one of my favorite classes. I mean, everybody who voted against the curriculum are all white people, and I don't think white people could fathom the psychological toll that Black students face, being in a world where faces barely resemble their own, or where the school lessons are often painting someone else's, someone else as a hero, or you're learning about the historic milestones of someone else's history, but yours is marginalized. The fact that this is even an issue is gonna have an effect on people, because we have to consider the message that we're trying to convey. It fuels this inferiority complex. Why is it that AP European History persists? Why is it that US government and politics, which is a very contentious course, that gets to stay? And they talk about revolutions, wars, and civil distress, but you don't seem to have an issue with that. So if the issue is that it's too divisive, we have to be consistent with the essence of that argument. Because what, right now, what it sounds like is that Africans, African Americans are so subpar that not even their history is worth teaching or learning about, and it's upholding white supremacy. So I want you all to reconsider, and for all the white people, because it was only white people who voted against it, I want you to see things through a different perspective and enhance your cultural competence, which is what this course can offer. Thank you.
To be one final reminder, according to the rules of the board, there are no clapping, there are no grandstanding, and the speakers are to speak to the board. Thank you.
Kareem Wallace is here too now, as well. Someone called earlier. While I was troubled by many of the board's comments at the last meeting, I was most, what I found most troubling and disheartening were your comments about the AP African American Studies course being divisive, needing a few tweaks, and not meeting your standards. Your votes and comments left me wondering what would make five white board members believe that they know better what should be included in the AP African American Studies course than the leaders in the field of Black Studies who worked with the College Board to develop and vet the course, or the 355 colleges and universities who have already signed on to provide college credit? I wondered what would make these five white board members, who have no background in curriculum assessment or development, think that they know better how to develop a curriculum that encourages critical thinking than their fellow board member who holds a PhD in curriculum instruction? Even more, I wondered what would make these five white board members believe that they could better tell the story of the reality of the African-American experience than their fellow African-American board members who voted in favor of the curriculum and whose daily lived experiences have given them insight and qualification that you will never have, even if you were committed to doing the work of understanding your own privilege and bias? What other than white privilege and supremacist thinking could possibly make you believe that you know best, when all of the evidence shows that this is a solid, multidisciplinary, truthful curriculum that engages students in critical thinking? Please spare us, and please spare your students, any additions that would likely lead to the continued deflection of our nation's responsibility for the enslavement and ongoing oppression of African Americans in the United States and perpetuate harmful narratives that the European perspective has so far. Now more than ever, we must strive for unity. In the words of Bernice King, "Sincere, love-centered calls for unity must be accompanied by work for true peace, which includes justice, correcting systems, correcting education, correcting thinking." I urge you to take justice in our schools and curriculum by approving the social science curriculum on tonight's agenda.
Next, we have Eva Fitzgerald, or Evangeline Fitzgerald, and Megan Fitzgerald.
Is this working? All right. I am Eva Fitzgerald. I will be going into the IB program next year. Good evening, members of the Board of Education. I'm here to talk tonight about the recently-voted-upon elective class for Advanced Placement Course for African American Studies. With what I have seen and heard, I have taken my own interpretation of this, and while it's certainly not every interpretation, I need to state some concerns I have. First of all, considering this class is an elective, students can choose whether they sign up for this. This does not mean the Board of Education needs to choose for all students. Second of all, your reasoning does seem to have quite a few flaws. For one, the balance aspect. While the negativity of the past can be off-putting, that's just how history can be. You can't rewrite it to your ideals. History was brutal and bloody. Yes, it seems that achievements are heavily outweighed by struggle. That's because that's how history was. It's nothing but the truth. By forcefully silencing the past, you will stifle the knowledge that others gain, and based on the topic of it being history, this isn't something that should be stifled. The people who signed up for this wanted to learn about this, and lack of education is a key input to feeding prejudice and misconceptions. And considering 75%, of students who signed up for this class are of African-American heritage, they would not get to learn of their own history. They would be unseen, unheard. One of the things you were going against was the concept of the oppressor versus the oppressed for being too divisive. But I just want to ask how? How would teaching something that happened divide others? I want an honest answer to that. Do you expect students to take after what they hear? If the student was able to choose whether they signed up for this class, they will also choose what they learn from it, and I'd reckon that in this context, they have the common sense to know not to oppress others. It's not a mandatory class. If a parent doesn't want a student taking said class for any reason, or if the student does not want to elect for this class, then they can choose not to elect for it.
Thank you.
Good evening, Dr. Bolson, and distinguished members of the Board of Education. My name is Megan Fitzgerald. I want to thank each of you for the effort and thought that you bring to the service you provide. It is evident that you are all passionate about being part of the education process for Hartford County public school students. To that end, I respectfully request that you revisit and perhaps reconsider your decision regarding the AP African American Studies course. Removing this elective course directly conflicts with the board's mission to provide a safe and caring environment that honors the diversity of our students and staff. Based on how well the course was received last year and the 90 students who signed up for it this year, this decision does not strike me as caring, and it's obvious that removing an elective course on African American Studies does not honor the diversity of the students and staff in our school system. The vision of the Board of Education is to inspire and prepare each student to achieve success in college and career. Because this AP elective is novel and unique, I am certain that there are students who plan to take this course that would not have otherwise chosen an advanced placement course. Removing this course has taken away their opportunity to take a college-level course. I spent some time this weekend reflecting on the long-term goals of the Board of Education, and one of them is to provide learning environments that are conducive to effective teaching and learning, creativity, and innovation. It is obvious to me that taking away a college-level course does not provide effective learning, creativity, or innovation. This whole decision was poorly handled. Before taking this vote, there could have been small group discussions that included students, caregivers, high school counselors, and teachers. For those of you who voted to remove this course, I challenge you to thoughtfully and critically consider the whole of African American history. If taught honestly and correctly, the content reflects significantly more strife and hardship than success and advancements. Learning uncomfortable truths about US history provides everyone opportunities for growth. It seems that some members of the Board of Education are capable, don't believe that our students are capable of critical thinking or deserving of resulting moral and academic harm.
Thank you.
We have Ms. Christine Bowers, followed by Derek Neues.
It's said that one bad apple, I'm sorry, one bad apple spoils the barrel. Therefore, I applaud those of you who dug deep into the two curricula that were presented at the last meeting and finding a few bad apples, said no to a spoiled product. Speaking of bad apples, I ask you to consider the following quotes: "No woman shall have the legal right to bear a child, and no man shall have the right to become a father without a permit for parenthood. A marriage license shall in itself give husband and wife only the right to a common household and not the right to parenthood. No permit for parenthood should be valid for more than one birth." I want to thank you, Mrs. Alvarez, for sniffing out this bad apple, Margaret Sanger, who was included in the Women in Perspective curriculum. Margaret Sanger was no friend of women, nor an advocate for choice. She, in many ways, actively worked against a woman's choice to bear children. Sanger supported Buck versus Bell decision, which permitted the sterilization of people deemed unfit without their consent. She also supported experimental birth control pills trials on Puerto Rican women without giving them full, informed consent. Many of these women suffered from sterilization as a result of these trials. She was an elitist who said that all of our problems are the result of the overbreeding among the working class. For your consideration, I would propose a woman who I think is a great American hero and a much sweeter choice. Dr. Mildred Fay Jackson, the first African-American graduate of Harvard Medical Law School, said of herself, "I became a physician in order to help save lives. I am at once a physician, a citizen, and a woman, and I am not willing to stand aside and allow the concept of expendable human lives to turn this great land of ours into just another exclusive reservation where only the perfect, the privileged, and the planned have the right to live." I hope this leaves a sweet taste in your mouth, as it does mine.
Is there a Derek Neues? Okay, next, we have Celeste Harris, followed by Patrick Owens.
Thank you. Good evening, President Ponton, excuse me, Ponton, Pointon, thank you. Vice President Hahn, Superintendent Bolson, and members of the board. I am here... I am here to speak to you today regarding your curricular decisions facing Board of Education. As a Harford County parent, constituent, and former educator, I have great concern with the most recent exclusionary decision that you made and want to make sure that it is reversed and future decisions support the Board's vision and mission. I am aware that at the last meeting, the Board voted to remove the opportunity for students to receive a complete social studies education. I am here today to encourage you to reevaluate the type of education that you are providing to the students of Harford County. Harford County Board of Education's mission is that each student is to attain academic and personal success in a safe and caring environment that honors diversity for all students and staff. How are you honoring the diversity for the staff and the students if you refuse to teach it or whitewash it? In short, you are not. You cannot change history and impact, or the impact on any social group. The vision of Harford County Public Schools is that we will inspire students to achieve success and honor, excuse me, and college and career ready. How are you preparing students to do that if you are omitting key aspects in American history? You aren't. Today, I challenge you to honor the oath that you took for the students of Harford County Public Schools.
Let's see if we can fix that sand. It's really old. It's probably from the budget cuts. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Patrick Owens, and I'm both a teacher at Harper Tech and a parent of future HCPS students. I'm here to advocate for the adoption of the AP African-American Studies course. I'm familiar with the course as I've spent hours planning and preparing to teach it in the fall. I firmly believe that this course is an important option for our students as it fulfills the values our school district has put forth for the social sciences where the vision is that every student can see themselves in their learning and can celebrate what they see. With respect to the AP African-American Studies, this obviously speaks to our African-American students first and foremost. However, I have had students at Tech of all races excited for the opportunity to take this course. I understand that some of the Board has expressed concerns with the topics addressed in the course. First, you are correct. The course does cover such topics as conflicts with police and human rights issues. However, denying our students the opportunity to take this course will not erase the fact that these issues happened and that our students will learn about them. Don't we want to give them the opportunity to learn about them in a space where they can be supported and guided? Over the last five years, I've been teaching US and AP US history. In that time, I've seen students handle many difficult topics with maturity and grace. Unfortunately, whether we are discussing African-American history specifically or America's history in our existing US classes, the reality is that we are going to have to cover some difficult topics. This class is not covering anything more violent or divisive than what's already covered in the AP and ninth-grade US history curricula, and that includes topics such as conflicts between civil rights activists and police, Tulsa massacre and Red Summer. Students will still learn about these topics as history and its many viewpoints are there to be studied. Board members also express concern that the course does not provide positive messages. While parts of the curriculum certainly cover some of the darker parts of history in America, a large amount of the focus in their curriculum is on positive aspects. Movements and contributions of African-Americans in culture, religion, education, art, music, theater, film, sports, medicine, and the armed forces are all dedicated time and space in the course. These are important things for students of all backgrounds to know and understand about. Students deserve to see themselves in education. Let them take this course.
I have Jim Thornton, followed by Cheryl Love.
Thank you. To President Pointon, Board members, Superintendent Bolson, and members of the Board of Ed, I'm Jim Thornton, former Board of Education member and member of the Harford County Caucus of African-American Leaders. I'm here this evening because I am outraged about the recent decision taken by this Board of Education at your meeting on Monday, June 24th. Your actions to deny the Advanced Placement African-American History regular status is an affront to the community that deeply cares about the education of all students in Harford County. I will not take any of my limited time to lay out the merits of the course. Instead, my comments this evening will focus on two themes. The root cause of this misguided action is taken primarily because of the action taken by the Harford County Government, our delegation, which passed a bill, House Bill 603, which was enacted in May of 19, 2022. Should have never been introduced by the Harford County delegation. I testified against that legislation at the time it was making its way through the General Assembly. The legislation effectively gave the county executive and county council the authority to appoint three members to this Board. In effect, it took the appointment from the governor, which, by the way, had been the process for many years during periods of time with both Republican and Democratic governors. That legislation in effect was supposed to be in the best interest of the citizens of Harford County. That assumption is inherently flawed. What we now have is a BOE dominated by ideologues, wedded to an ideology supported by such individuals as Ron DeSantis, Governor Florida, and several other high-profile elected leaders across the country that subscribe to a right-wing public education agenda. Furthermore, we have a broken process wherein an appointed member of the Board can become the president. This is absurd. From a governor's process, this is a policy that must change. To whom is he accountable? There was a loud cry several years ago to move to an elective Board, but we now have an appointed person.
Thank you, sir.
Is Cheryl Love here? Cheryl Love will be followed by Lisa Stonem.
There is nothing theoretical about being lynched. In fact, in Harford County, not more than a few miles from this location, several black men were lynched in the 1860s and 1900s. There is nothing theoretical, and it is an overwhelmingly horrific experience to be beat and spat upon because you are trying to desegregate schools, department stores, trains, and buses, as was the case throughout the 50s and the 60s when the freedom riders. There is nothing theoretical but can be overwhelmingly demoralizing experience because of Jim and Jane Crow laws to be the headlining marquee act of an entertainment venue where you have to enter from the rear and are forbidden to eat and use the bathroom on the premises. The whole Motown roster of musicians performing during the 50s and the 60s, whose music we jam to today, were subjected to this discrimination. This gives meaning to "you want my rhythm, but not my blues." There are, these are the lived experience and truths of millions more of African-Americans that span centuries. It is unfortunate that we find Board members not wanting to accept the fullness of the American experience. This country has for too long erased, ignored, and diminished the contributions of black people. This is the very reason why Dr. Cottage Woodson and others established Negro History Month and subsequently African-American, um, um, African-American Month, Heritage Month. What is positive is the tenacity and the perseverance exhibited by a people bolstered by their faith to make a way seemingly out of nowhere. What is positive is the fact that throughout the history and even today, there are allies who see our humanity and raise their voices to speak out against the inhumane and unethical treatment. What is positive is to acknowledge the country's collective pain and glory, tribulations and triumphs, our shameful and prideful moments. The truth is well documented. Continuing to ignore it, refusing to accept and acknowledge it sends a message about whose history is important and whose-
My name is Lisa. I don't normally sign up to speak for these meetings. Frankly, I don't feel comfortable being up here, but I feel like I need to for my granddaughter and all of the students. The educational system is failing our children. I have a lot of concerns with some of the agendas that I've listened to at these meetings. It seems like we're spending money on social issues, more money on social issues, and telling our students what to, what to think instead of teaching them how to think on their own.
Next, we have Kareem Wallace, followed by Mary Brown. Is Kareem Wallace here? Okay.
I am happy to be here today, but I'm really, really disturbed. I read in the Sun papers the other day that Bel Air is one of the best places to live. And then I go back and I take a look at all of the articles that came out of the Sun paper within the last couple of weeks. Harford School Board is Erasing Black History for Fear of Division. AP American History Class, a Blow to Harford County. Now, this should not encourage people to want to come to live here, but let me go on. As a citizen and retired educator, a 40-year resident, I am disappointed, appalled, at yet another example of blatant divisive political whitewashing of American history taken from the playbook of Project 2025. To deny our AP students true African-American history must be the goal of this Board. You indicate as your position, our students of Harford County Public Schools deserve better. Take this opportunity to reconsider, examine, the choice to eliminate this course. Should you not reinstate this course, I assure you, and I will encourage parents, citizens, retired parent teachers, church members, other Board members, social organizations, to engage, band together, to teach the truth. And the truth is not always good. Sometimes it's bad and ugly. In our homes and in our community centers and in our churches, we will go forward to teach the history needed. Didn't know history, didn't know better. Know history, know better. Thank you.
My name is Kareem Wallace. I'm a junior at Edgewood High School. I'm here to address the rejection of the AP African-American Studies course and the ignorance behind it. Firstly, history by its very nature should be uncomfortable and unsettling. This discomfort is what gives history value to understand influence and use knowledge to sculpt a better future through insight and awareness. AP African-American Studies is a course, a chosen course, that does just this. Quote, "The topics are heavily political-oriented and perpetuate the message of oppressor versus oppressor. I didn't find positive messages that weren't overwhelmed by the negative messages. Understand that it is impossible to separate African-American history from politics as it is deeply rooted in political struggle and political resilience." The significance of this course is to urge students to dig deeper, and unfortunately, the more you dig in American history, the uglier it gets. Stop taking our sovereign. I've listened to your statements and identified a shared concern, the portrayal and villainization of the police. In no way does this curriculum dictate or tell students how to feel about the police. The course only presents raw material from historical record of the undeniable inequities towards the African-Americans by the police force. The question is not if the course villainizes the police, but if the police have committed villainous acts towards the black community for decades in which this image is established. There are so many, quote, "There are so many assignments and pictures of police conflicts, human rights conflicts, social justice conflicts, people against the police instead of the focus on great people in history." We are no longer little kids. African-American history is much deeper than MLK and Rosa Parks. The conflict mentioned are not only majority of African-American history, but integral in understanding the motivations of these great people. Lastly, a Board member said, "I think we are missing an opportunity to present positive messages of unity and great American contributions." When we loosely use the word unity and great American contributions, let's remember holidays like Thanksgiving and Columbus Day, which often misrepresent historical truth with a reality benefiting the narrative of this country.
Next, we have Victoria Harvey, followed by Christie Crawford Smick. Is Victoria Harvey here? Is Christie Crawford Smick here?
Good evening. My name is Christie Crawford Smick, and I am the proud president of the Harford County Education Association. I came prepared tonight, so you will be receiving my original comments via email. I'd like to thank Mrs. Bruce, Dr. Mueller, Mr. Sewell, and Mrs. Perry for voting to retain the AP African-American Studies course. Thank you for standing up against a political agenda that wants to pretend that there is a positive side to the horrors of slavery and Jim Crow. Your unwavering support for educators and our students is appreciated. Five of you voted to deny students the opportunity to earn AP credit and rob them of a robust educational experience because there aren't enough positive messages of unity, or there are too many mentions of activism or social justice. The five of you, who all happen to be white, are also denying the rights of students to learn about American history through the eyes of African-Americans, which exposes your hypocrisy. Your intentional prohibition of this course is the same indoctrination that you so frequently preach against. You are choosing to ignore and disregard the experiences of the only people of color on this Board. On July 1st, all HCPS union presidents sent the Board a joint letter that expressed our disappointment in the Board's vote and comments by Board members. Very clear that there's a segment of the Board that is prioritizing their own comfort over teaching the factual history of this nation. We learn and grow best when our comfort is tested, and that is how students learn critical thinking skills. In Dr. Pointon's response to our letter, he stated that the Board's responsibility is to develop curriculum. I respectfully disagree. The Board is charged with the responsibility of approving curriculum, but you first need to understand what that means. Curriculum is a framework that educators use to craft their lessons. It's the teacher's job to decide how they guide their students to meet each outcome. In the last 24 years as an educator, I have witnessed a lot of change, turmoil, and growth over the years. In all of those years, I've never witnessed a group of people who claim to support public education try so hard to dismantle it. Every Board has their legacy, and if this continues, this Board's legacy will be one of shame that took this district running backwards due to your bigotry and unnecessary drama. Remember, educators are watching, and we will replace-
Next, we have Charlene Haupt, followed by Marlon Tillman. Is there a Charlene Haupt? Marlon Tillman? Are there showing?
Good evening. Thank you to everyone that's here and managed to get here, and those that are upstairs waiting to hear what happens, and people in the church down the street who are already here listening to us. I'm sorry. I'm sorry. Good evening. I'm Charlene Haupt, and as I said, thank you for bringing us here, those of us that could manage to get in. And my one objection is that I strongly object to any vote being held tonight when dozens and hundreds of people all over the place are not able to express their opinions or even their attitudes or be heard. So that's one thing that I had to say, even before I started speaking. So far, sorry. So far, opponents of DEI have been successful and have managed through the highest court to have you believe that affirmative action is unfair to them. Affirmative action that by and large benefited white women more than anyone else. The opponent's denial of fairness furthers their attitude towards superiority over women, and many women believe in this superiority. Go figure. The removal of a woman's right to choose being just one example of the Federalist Society's plans to dish out. In their arrogance, they have disclosed a more detailed plan in their Project 2025. Two very salient plans are to abolish the Education Department and amplify parents' rights regarding control of our schools. These two subjects go hand in hand, and that's only the beginning of their plans. The Coors Family, beer; the Walton Family, Walmart; and ExxonMobil have contributed to the Heritage Foundation, Project 2025. What does big business and their money interjected into our schools do for our children? The excuses don't ring true, and every student beyond the age of fifth graders know it. Which of you are in favor of Project 2025? The plan is extreme on women's rights, diversity, equity, and inclusion programs, and its very first premise is to target low-income and low-resourced communities. Education that can halt and/or reverse all the inroads we have made combating discrimination of those whose color or culture-
Next, we have Zalina Giles. Next, we have Zelena Giles, followed by Lillian Moss.
Good evening. I'm here as a parent, and I'm here to express my profound disappointment and deep concern regarding your decision to deny A P African-American Studies regular status. This decision not only perpetuates the harmful notion that the histories crucial to device diverse populations in our county should be overlooked, but it also blatantly disregards the lived experiences of black and brown community members, educators, and students who cherish and benefit from this course. The integration of diverse perspectives in education is indispensable for equipping students to thrive in our increasingly interconnected world. It is deeply troubling that the Board of Education claims to prioritize balance in our schools, yet consistently obstructs the inclusion of diverse and rigorous materials. Education should empower our students, our children, to engage with and learn from and critically analyze complex subjects within a supportive learning environment. True educational quality cannot be achieved by limiting the narratives taught to our students. This curriculum has undergone thorough revision, successful piloting, as we've heard, and has received praise from educational experts and students alike in our community. And the key word there is "educational experts." Your decision to reject this course under the guise of quality control over balance lacks justification and undermines the integrity of our educational mission. It is imperative that history be taught in its entirety without omission to prevent the repetition of past injustices. I urge you to reconsider your decision.
Good evening. My name is Lillian Moss. I'm fourteen years old, and I'm here to speak against the removal of the A P African-American Studies curriculum. During the first D E I meeting of my eighth grade year, my class was asked how we felt about the racial dynamics within our grade. One thing I will never forget from that conversation is when a classmate, who was white, stated that she felt that any student who had experienced a microaggression or felt uncomfortable at any point as a person of color should simply just deal with it. As a black girl, this only showed the lack of understanding in the true history and structures of America that in some places still remain today. This is why it is so important to include classes like these as an opportunity to gain the skills to grasp a deeper understanding and analyze events. Eliminating the chance to receive this level of education simply because it is uncomfortable to hear is outrageous. Why should the truth be watered down to the point where you are comfortable hearing it? I'm confident that students who intended on taking this course didn't want to worry about how someone felt awkward or targeted while they were learning, which brings me to my second point. Making students aware of modern-day issues such as police brutality is not villainizing the police in any way or targeting a certain race. The constantly shifting climate of America is important to keep up with, especially for young adults. So learning about current events and what has happened to young African-Americans for simply walking down the street is a great way to incorporate today's world into lessons about the past. From insensitive comments to another black person unjustly losing their lives, this topic has continued to be something I care about deeply. I am tired of my history being reduced to a brief mention of slavery in a history class because we are so much more than that. Our history certainly did not begin in bondage and surely will not end in it. Our history is a resilient one and deserves to be taught and well-known. Thank you.
Next, we have Christian Hauck, followed by Tanya Tayo.
Good evening, everybody. My name is Christian Hauck. I'm a former student at Hartford Technical High School, and my little sister Cameron is a currently rising senior at Hartford Technical High School. She was devastated when she heard of the board's rejection of A P African-American Studies, and even more devastated when she realized that she would be out of the country and unable to present her thoughts and share them with y'all. This will be me rapidly sharing her own words with y'all. My last day of school, I spent time looking over the A P African-American Studies course in my history teacher's room. He has stepped up to teach the class next year, and he, an adult, had expressed his excitement to learn about parts of African-American history that he didn't have a vast knowledge of, despite a degree in history. I myself was also greatly interested in learning more about my ancestry in depth, since so little time is often spent on it in schools. We learn of slavery, of civil rights, and of very little in between. All this to say, it was a genuine shock to learn the board had rejected it for next year. Disregarding this course has taken away an option for learning, not a requirement, but an option. An option for students to see themselves in what is taught in classes, an option for students to learn more about their peers. If it is often ignorance that leads to hate, what better way to combat it than to educate? Concerns expressed by the board stated that this course is too depressing, too focused on the bad, too lacking in positivity. The view that African-American history can be too steep to negativity is a small-minded outlook that harms African-Americans to this day. It is an injustice to African-American history itself to try to teach a watered-down, gentle, palatable version. If you wish to celebrate the advances we have made as a society, you must acknowledge the despair that we went through, the truth that African-Americans walk with today. If you do not, if you only allow history to be taught when it is wrapped with a bow and placed in a neat little box, to only be taught when it has been changed to your personal discretion, then you are doing the gravest injustice to the students you serve. Please do not take away the opportunity for education. The educated mind is our greatest defense against the prejudices of today. Please give A P African-American Studies regular status for the school year.
Tanya Tayo.
I just wanted to say that there's somebody back there that wasn't called yet, so after me, if you guys want to get back to her. I mean, she was called, but like she was not inside. I heard you guys call her name. I just wanted to say, I completely stand for and support board members that are properly advocating for every single student. I give credit to Diane Alvarez, Melissa Hawn, Erin Pointon, Lauren Strauss, and Terry Kocher. Well done with the last meeting and standing your ground. I appreciate it, and I'm very proud of you. Our test scores are terrible. So, I mean, the thing is, we got to focus on that. For the rest of you board members that stood up just to go ahead and vote for it because the experts said so, or the curriculum is all we have, I'm just kind of like, shame on you. Like, really do your own research. You know, it's not the history that's the problem. It's like the way that it's being construed or slanted, you know, certain ways. And I know this for a fact. My kids are graduated now, so they're out. But I'm concerned. I have nieces and nephews, and I know a lot of people, and I am a member of the community. Curriculum, so if you... If you, if you... If you don't know everything that you're voting for, you shouldn't be voting for it tonight, period. I hope all you guys had a chance to look everything over and you know what you're doing here. And I just wanted to say that my own kids personally had to witness the critical race theory. I know a lot of people think there's no agenda going on like that, but there is. Okay? Like, a couple of years ago, the Hartford Tech principal got on the announcements and was apologizing for being white. So my kids come home, and they're like, "Do we have to feel bad that we're white?" Like, of course not. And I personally don't like that at all because my husband and I worked very hard for everything we have. And I'll just end with that because I'm so mad. Thank you.
Brenda Terant, followed by Jeremiah Pedigen. Is there a Brenda Terant? Okay, thank you.
So I think we called Victoria, but we missed her. Oh, you were in the bathroom. You picked the worst time to go, but welcome back.
So it was awful.
Can we, uh...
And there was no other ladies in the restroom. It was very stressful.
I'm sorry. What is your name?
Victoria. Victoria Harvey?
Okay, thank you.
We could have quiet, please. We'll continue. Welcome.
Okay. I am here to express appreciation to those board members that voted against rolling out the A P African-American Studies for regular status. As a mom in a multi-ethnic family, it is disheartening to see the continued attempt at creating the next generation of activists by dividing us all by color and gender. I'm sick of the division. I, I love everybody. I don't care. You can be purple. I don't care. One of the students in the pilot program said exercising my rights has become my utmost priority. I hope that all social studies classes have an emphasis on the rights that the Constitution provides each and every one of us. Viewing history through the lens of today leads to revisionist history, which we have experienced with the vandalism and destruction of memorials throughout the nation. There is an agenda being pushed forward from the upper echelons of government down to the unions to create generations of social justice warriors, and that's not a compliment. The irony is that the H C E A sent out a letter to the Board of Education dated July first that states "education does not have party lines." Yet the H C E A sent a letter to the Hartford County Council just seven days later that includes a sentence that says, "As association presidents representing 5,000 Hartford County Public Schools, we are urging you to vote in favor of Bill 24-016 to override the county executive's veto." That is definitely on party lines. With a family member that was a founding delegate of Steel Workers Union, this is a reminder to the board as to what the role of the union is. The union is in place to protect workers' safety, protect working conditions, and negotiate wages. There should be no attempt to dictate the business model, or in this case, curriculum. The majority of parents and a growing number of educators find the H C E A irrelevant. Thank you to the board members that had the backbone to vote in the best interest of Hartford County's families. Thank you.
Is there a Brenda Terant?
Yeah, I'm giving a little bit of latitude here, but I'm really losing my patience. Okay? So moving forward, please, we will follow the rules that have been established by this board. No clapping, no grandstanding, no matter how good the speech is. Thank you. Please continue.
Good evening. I'm Brenda Terant, and I'm an educator, and I'm a science educator. I'm not a social studies teacher or a history teacher. However, I am a teacher who's had the opportunity to take a trip to the South on a civil rights trip, for a week-long trip on a civil rights trip with other teachers. This trip has let me know how important African-American history is in this country, how many holes there are. I've been on the trip four times. This is the first time that I went with all teachers, and all of them were stunned by how much information they did not have about the history of this country. I'm extremely sensitive to what our students are missing and how popular this particular course is. Nobody's investigating A P Chem. Nobody's investigating A P Lit. Nobody's investigating anything in this country except A P African-American Studies. You are really, really taking a deep dive into this particular course. It is ugly. Our history is ugly, but it's important that we understand it. We know that this course is rigorous. It requires that students analyze, compare and contrast, extrapolate compared to some other historical event. It is very rigorous. But because it's uncomfortable, maybe if students see how uncomfortable this is, they won't revisit the conditions that led them to that ugly past. Maybe our future will be brighter because they understand their history even better. They have the information to change history, to make it better. So please, of all the classes that you all are looking at, why this one? Ask yourself, and I implore you, please, one museum, if you go to any, go to the Legacy Museum in Montgomery, Alabama, and learn your U.S. history.
Next, we have Jeremiah Pedigen, followed by Kay Flo.
Good evening. My name is Jeremiah Pedigen. I'm a student at Haverty Grace High School, where I'm serving as the vice president of Student Government Association. I'm the drum major of our marching band, and I'm a member of several other organizations. I have enjoyed, over the years, taking A P classes since the ninth grade, and I was also recommended to take this class, but of course, now I can't. Throughout my years, I have, that I've been enrolled here, I have witnessed significant neglect regarding diversity. Growing up in Maryland, I have, it has shown me the importance of incorporating classes that foster a community of love, compassion, and kindness towards all. We are all gathered here today to express our opinions on the recent decision to remove African-American Studies from our schools. This decision deeply concerns me, as it undermines the progress we have towards creating an inclusive and respectful education environment. My question is, why? Why are we taking steps backward instead of moving forward? Why is the well-being of our students not the primary focus? Why is diversity seen as an opponent rather than recognizing that the true issue is the lack of diversity? Will there ever be a moment in time when our main focus is on the well-being of the students? Will there ever be a time when diversity isn't an opponent but the lack of diversity, like I said? Will it ever be? It is time for us to take a stand and advocate for an educational system that will embrace and celebrate all histories in all cultures. This is not just about adding a subject to the curriculum. It's about acknowledging and respecting the experiences and contributions of African-Americans and ensuring that all students receive a well-rounded and inclusive education. Let's work together to create a future where diversity is celebrated and not feared. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Kay Flo. I am here on behalf of the president of the Hartford County N double A C P. And I am going to go ahead and start at the end because our timeline has changed. To, to begin to rectify the harm that has been done by this decision that you've obviously heard tonight, we're asking, the N double A C P is, is asking that there is an immediate reconsideration of your decision and a full approval of the A P African-American Studies curriculum for implementation as an optional, optional elective course at all planned Hartford County schools. Let me just say, Mr. Pointon, I appreciated your statement at the beginning of this session, and I, I too wish for us to have mutual respect as we look at this issue. As you can see by the diversity of the N double A C P and the room, all that has shown up in this room, to ask that our youth have the opportunity to learn in a guided manner. I have received the curriculum in three different social media platforms. That means our youth already have access to it. We have the opportunity to have educators walk our young people through this. And as you can see, and as you've heard tonight, our young people are way more advanced than we are. They are already discussing things on a level that we should be proud of them being able to, to, to discuss. Reconsider what has been done. History is looking at us right now. This decision is being marked in history as divisive. Make a decision that will bring our community together. Thank you.
Next, we have Fred Hamel, followed by Annie Beeson. Fred Hamel or Annie Beeson?
Hi, good evening, and thank you to the board for allowing me to speak tonight. I am a mom of two students who attend Emerton Elementary School. As a member of the PTA and a room parent, most kids know me as Miss Owen's Mom or Mrs. Aaron's Mommy. Let me be clear, I am not here representing the school, but rather as one of its biggest fans. I am not an expert in education. I don't have a history or a literature degree, but I have learned some things during our time at Emerton, and I do have some common sense. The Eagles have sort of a school slogan, and it says, "With open minds, open hearts, and open hands will soar." I am here to respectfully ask this Board of Education to reflect upon the ways in which you are helping our community to soar. Will you ignore? Will you ignore the updated social studies curriculum proposal, thereby risking a loss of state funding for our entire district? Will you fill in the gaps when unsupported teachers and staff inevitably walk away from their classrooms in this district, some packed with thirty or more eight- and nine-year-olds? Will you ignore your community of gathered experts, educators, students, and scholars that are gathered here today? Or will you approach these votes with open hearts and open minds? Or will you approach these votes with open hearts and open minds in much the same way that we ask our six, eight, and 10-year-old friends to do in their classrooms every day? Thank you.
Next, we have Jason King and Ryan Burby.
Good evening. My name is Jason King. I'm a social studies teacher at Jopeton High School, as well as a member of the HCEA Board of Directors. I come before you tonight to ask a simple question. What are you doing? I have been attending meetings regularly for the past year and voiced my opinion, mostly against the policies that the Board of Ed is trying to implement, because as a teacher and a parent, I feel that they are restricting student learning, and tonight is no different. As I watched the last board meeting and heard adults comment about how there was not enough positive imagery or how certain curriculum did not meet the standards of certain board members, a thought crossed my mind. Where were the students who opposed these classes? If the content being taught in these classes were truly an issue, then I would have expected hundreds of students to speak out against these classes. Most of the opposition has come from a handful of board members. Since I teach at a school that offers both classes, I've had the chance to talk to numerous students who are enrolled in one or both classes, and I can tell you that there has been a tremendous amount of positive feedback from students. These classes allow students to see history through a different lens and allow students to learn about events that are not taught in a traditional U.S. history class. Another point I would like to make is that the AP African-American History and Women in Perspective classes are electives. This means that students have a choice. These classes are not part of graduation requirements. If a student has a problem with the content or material, the student can choose not to take it. So, I ask you again, what are you doing? Were you elected or appointed to serve your own political agenda or to do what is best for the students of Harford County? Your vote tonight will answer those questions. Thank you.
Next, we have Noah Myers, followed by Diane Christie.
All right. Members of the Board, good evening. My name is Noah Myers, and I am here to show my support for the AP African-American History course getting regular status as is. Members of this Board have denied this class regular status with false appeals to balance or decency and have raised objections that the course promotes activism and protest, which is inherently contradictory because these are ideals that this country was founded on. It is amazing when people become com- or, sorry, my bad. It is amazing how when people become comfortable in their privilege, they want to forget the past and how when people who are comfortable with their privilege gain power, they then want to deny other groups the opportunity to learn about said past. There have been numerous students who have taken this class and speak highly of it and who write in offensive that this Board believes they are not capable of taking in this material. Does this mean the members of the Board believe they have failed students to teach, failed to teach students to be able to think critically? The members of this Board of Education and the groups they are part of have shouted loudly about suppressing and censoring history. If you were actually against that, you wouldn't be censoring this AP African-American History class.
Is there a Diane Christie? Gretchen Lindsay, followed by Anne Paige Garner.
Sorry. Can you hear me? Okay. Good evening, Dr. Bolson, Board members, and guests. My name is Gretchen Lindsay, a proud reading teacher at Southampton Middle School. I hope that those on the Board that did not approve the Grade VI Human Geography Curriculum and the AP African-American Studies course will reconsider and approve these courses for Harford County Public Schools. Teaching history from different perspectives is essential and necessary for all grade levels as well as the general public. How can we learn from our past if we do not see the past from different perspectives? Why are we so scared? And I will end with one of my favorite quotes. Fear leads to anger. Anger leads to hate. And hate leads to suffering. Thank you for the opportunity to voice my opinion.
Anne Paige Garner, followed by Heather Turchi.
Good evening. My name is Anne Paige Garner. I'm a retired educator from Harford County Public Schools and the proud great-grandmother of six children who are currently enrolled in Harford County Public Schools. It has been suggested that we study history to help us understand how events in the past made things the way they are today. Understanding the present and historical context provides information so that we not only learn about ourselves and how we came to be, but to also develop the ability to avoid mistakes and create better paths for our society. But we can only achieve that goal if we are willing to present the total picture, the good, the bad, and the ugly. Some is good, some is bad, and some is just plain ugly. But by presenting all the facts, we enable our students to thoughtfully examine and discuss how events from those categories contributed to the world and our country as we know it today. That examination will surely result in identifying events to celebrate. It will also result in the recognition of painful moments, which is not meant to place blame or to make students feel responsible for actions beyond their control, but to expand their understandings of the truth of those ugly events so that we will move forward and not repeat our ancestors' mistakes. I respectfully ask the Board members to reconsider their vote. Our students and our country deserve and need all the facts in order to create better paths for our democracy. I urge you to vote in favor of granting AP African-American regular status. Thank you for your time.
Good evening. I come to you speak, oops, there goes my, hold on a minute, sorry, sorry. Oh, my time's ticking too. Geez. I come to you speak about the curricular issues on the agenda tonight. My comments can be drilled down to three words: hypocrisy, projection, and ignorance. The hypocrisy of the Board's comments to the media is almost laughable. Out of one side of your mouth, you speak about parental choice when speaking about the sixth-grade curriculum and why you don't want to implement that. Where's the parental choice when it comes to African-American Studies or Women in History? Nothing says more about choice than electives in a public high school arena. However, you want to take the parental and student choice away. It is clearly your choice as a parent to steal your student away from that class of any elected classes offered in high schools. It is simple. Register for another class. Stop trying to impart your ignorance on all of us. Projection. Stop blaming educators for indoctrinating the students of HCPS. As a taxpayer with no children in HCPS, it clearly looks like the indoctrination is coming from you. My daughter is looking for her forever home in Harford County. We have had many conversations about the direction that the Board of Education is trying to move the education in Harford County towards. I would much rather that my granddaughter be educated in a forward-thinking, inclusive environment, and my daughter agrees. How many other informed parents are going to choose another county? How will your radical Board, how much will your radical Board cost Mr. Casely and the county in taxes? Ignorance. I read in the media that a board member said that they wanted to not offer American Studies because it was not positive enough and too divisive. So, under this statement, the school system will not teach any history that is not positive or- So, students would not learn about the Trail of Tier, 911, CJ, and the Holocaust.
Thank you.
All these sort of events seem pretty non-profitive to me, but important.
Thank you.
I am still going. Where is the value of learning about history?
I'm sorry.
All history, not just the history that is deemed positive or decisive, should be prepared. We should not prepare it for our students of the world outside of Harford County. History is divisive. Sure is. That goes way back to the Revolution. Should we not learn about it if it was just a waste of time?
Next, we have David Eltrinhem. Is there a David Eltrinhem?
You're gonna have to speak up. Can we have quiet, please?
Next, we have David Eltrinhem, followed by Christina Lenosha.
I find that very rude. I am here this evening to lend my voice on behalf of the students. It is my desire to share my earnest beliefs regarding these proposed AP courses. I am a believer in education and want our students to have every learning opportunity possible. But what they are taught in this public arena may be based on, may be based on historical facts. A distortion of history and facts to create a narrative that is ultimately tearing down our society and is intentional. The agenda is using young, impressionable minds to accomplish this. My heart aches for these students who are being led to believe this curriculum, an agenda that has its roots in Marxism. She proves it. True history teaches those who are teachable, and Marxism ultimately destroys. It destroys body, mind, and spirit. We see the agenda in many areas of our lives today, and it's disheartening, to say the least. The Board did right not to approve these AP courses. And I must, I must do right as a taxpayer in Harford County to speak about these courses also. However, it's not about taxes. This is about the erosion of our public education and my desire to do what I can do to protect the minds of impressionable students. Identity politics has no place in our public schools. Good Lord, there's so much we can learn about our history, why is it stuck in one spot? Citizens of the former Soviet Union bloc have warned that America is showing telltale signs of the very evils that plague them. And these evils are all, all began with psychological manipulation. These courses are just that. We must resist the agenda. Alexander Solzhenitsyn gave us a quote. He said, "Live not by lies." So, this is what we must do. Get to the truth, folks. We can all go together there. All right? Good evening. Thank you.
Yes, we do need God back in our schools. Jesus said, "I am the way, the truth, and the life. No one comes to the Father except through Me." We do need to tell our children the whole truth about our history, not minimizing the positive changes that have been made and not sugarcoating the horrible parts of our history. I do agree with that. That, for example, in the Women in Perspective curriculum resources, Margaret Sanger is glorified rather than being presented in full truth regarding her being a eugenicist and a racist. The following is a quote from Margaret Sanger said in a December 1939 letter to Dr. C.J. Gamble. "We do not want word to go out that we want to exterminate the Negro population." And the minister is the man who can straighten out that idea if it ever occurs to any of their more rebellious members. The same 1939 letter shows Sanger saying, "I note that you doubt it worthwhile to employ a full-time Negro physician. It seems to me, from my experience, while I have been in North Carolina, Georgia, Tennessee, and Texas, that while the colored Negroes have great respect for white doctors, they can get closer to their own members and more or less lay their cards on the table, which means their ignorance, superstitions, and doubts." More of Sanger's words are from an article titled "A Better Race Through Birth Control." She says, "Given birth control, the unfit will voluntarily eliminate their kind. Birth control does not mean contraception is indiscriminately practiced," she wrote. "It means the release and cultivation of the better elements in our society." Margaret Sanger is not someone we want to look at as a hero. Margaret Sanger proactively moved to eliminate those she deemed unfit, including the African-American population. I advocate for telling the unvarnished truth about her and her views on the African-American population. May God bless you with wisdom and guidance in all your decision-making.
Next, we have Jordan Cook, followed by Reverend C. Hunter.
Hello. Okay. Hi, my name is Jordan Cook. I'm a student at Towson University, and I'm speaking here today about the concerns I have regarding the cancellation of the AP African-American Studies curriculum. So, AP, so the AP African-American Studies curriculum was implemented in school right after I graduated high school, so I missed out on it unfortunately. But growing up in Harford County, I did not witness a lot of diversity in the school curriculum. It was only in February where I witnessed a little bit of diversity and representation. But still, it was the same historical figures, Rosa Parks, Dr. Martin Luther King, and Harry Truman, of course. Though these figures are amazing to learn about, there are more powerful black people who exist in history that me and other students could have learned about, and I wish that we did learn about. Outside of school, I spent a lot of time reading, researching, unlearning, and then relearning about the richness of African culture. I had to teach myself that my ancestors' history didn't start with enslavement, even though that's what I felt my high school was teaching me, teaching me to begin with. Because of the negative impacts I endured as a result of not seeing diversity and representation as it pertained to African culture, I created my own curriculum that I'm teaching middle school students, and it's titled Healing Culture Through Color. The topics I teach my students about, one of them, one of them happens to be African-American culture. And these students, who are middle schoolers, absolutely adore, absolutely adore it. They are really interested in it. They're interested in doing the hands-on artwork inspired by African culture, and they are always appreciative of it. So, if this choice is made to remove the African-American Studies curriculum, it could be one of the biggest disadvantages we give our students. For young black students, the African-American Studies curriculum is an opportunity for them to feel represented and empowered. So, I'm going to ask this. Since there is so much positive and impactful modern material we can continue to embed into the African-American Studies curriculum, why will we ever think about taking the course away to begin with? We will reap more negative repercussions from this than positive ones. And this-
Good evening, all. I'm Cordell Hunter. I'm a resident of this illustrious county, for the most part. I come to, to support the inclusion and implementation of the African-American history approach and learning experiences in this particular county. As an educator of more than 50 years, we found out that we practice inclusion, and we want to provide an opportunity for students to do critical thinking, to do analysis, and do those things by which they can think and they can make decisions based upon accurate and completed and comprehensive information. We also want to share an absence of the overriding opportunities of excellent learning experience for all students, especially Black and Brown. Aspirants could be viewed as the following. Number one, lacking a vision for student and community development. Number two, ineffective school policies and procedures. Number three, marginalized climate for learning on the dimensions of learning one, two, and three. And leadership that fails to model for anticipated student excellence rather than mediocrity. It also, your decision is an indication of the insensitivity to DEI, thereby perpetuating the status quo of intentional, intensive, and systematic racism. It also shows there's an indication in terms of that white supremacy is the order of the day. And whereas it's the inclusion of this, of this, of this program would provide an opportunity by which students will learn about themselves. And as they learn about themselves, they learn about others.
Was there a Jordan Cook?
Jordan Cook?
Okay. Okay. Amber Hopkins, followed by Felicia Hopkins.
Hello. My name is Amber Hopkins. I'm a senior at Morgan State University, and I have a comment to make about the removal of the African-American AP Studies. So, I want to emphasize, first of all, the importance of historical integrity. It doesn't matter how divisive you feel that the curriculum is. How many people do you trust that have lied to you or sugarcoated the truth to you? How many people in your life- How many people in your life do you feel comfortable listening to, formulating your opinions around, and they have lied to you? Not many, or any at all. Especially as a Black American student, when I learned the truth of how gruesome slavery was, enslaved people, their skin being made into furniture, I, from that point on, I couldn't even trust, look at the government, look at the people who were teaching me these things the same way. I went to Amity Elementary, I went to Patterson Mill. I graduated in 2019, so I have not taken this course. But once the students learn the truth about history, what do you think that they're going to feel about the government? That's more divisive, lying. It's gonna divide them more if you lie to them, rather than telling them the truth. Everything about African-American history is not peaches and cream. And to this day, I'm still learning about the whole African diaspora. I'm still learning about myself and my cultural background. And it's important, not just to African-American students, but students of all races, so they don't have any unconscious biases against their peers. And hopefully this opens a conversation and allows other curriculums to be made for other...
Good evening, members of the Hartford County Board of Education. My name is Felicia Hopkins, and I represent the Youth and Richness Society of Hartford County, a nonprofit that supports youth through community service, leadership, college scholarships, and admission fees. I'm here today to advocate for the implementation of the AP African American Studies curriculum in all high schools in Hartford County. In the interest of time, I'm going to cut my speech down. Understanding African-American history is crucial because it provides a comprehensive and accurate representation of the United States past. African-American history is American history. It encompasses the struggles, achievements, and contributions of African Americans who have helped shape our nation, from the injustices of slavery and segregation to the triumphs of the civil rights movement and beyond. These stories are vital to understanding the complexities and progress of our country. Moreover, mutual liberation of all races are intertwined with the accurate representation of history. By acknowledging and teaching the realities of African-American history and experiences, we pave the way for greater unity and solidarity among different racial and ethnic groups. To address directly the Board of Education member who stated that presenting an AP African American course in its present state would, and I quote, "perpetuate the stigma of victimhood," I had to pause at the assessment and look up at the actual meaning of that in the Webster's Dictionary. Victimhood is a condition of having been hurt, damaged, or made to suffer, especially when you want people to feel sorry for you because of this use of the excuse of something. My response to this is as follows. We do not want people to feel sorry for us because we celebrate how we feel or talk about the darker sides of history. We seek to understand what made America the way it is today. The term "victimhood" can be a supple from, form of disrespect to an entire race. And it implies that our lived experiences were not real and should not be downplayed or only discussed positively.
Thank you.
Next we have Jessica Fendrick, followed by Bonnie Nutson. Is there a Jessica Fendrick?
I'm Bonnie Nutson, I'll go first since Jess is on her way down. I'm gonna keep it really, really brief tonight. My comments are to the five of you, you know who you are by now, I don't need to say your names. The African American Studies class is an elective. I think a few other people brought that up tonight. But not approving this class, you're taking away parental rights, which you liked so much to rave about. So I just wanted to say, thank you for that. Dr. Pointon, you said yourself, writing curriculum is a monumental task that relies on experts. Respectfully, I have read all of your bios on the HTTPS website. None of the five of you have any experience or education in education and are therefore not qualified to write curriculum. I'm asking to approve this course as it was. I would like to see it in all high schools, to be honest with you. Thank you.
Is Jessica Fendrick here? Okay, Ronald Wooden, followed by Mike Parker.
Good evening, Ron Wooden, proud principal of Opus Road Elementary School and the twenty-four Hartford County Public Schools Teacher of the Year. Tonight, I come as one but stand for ten thousands, representing all of those whose names we know made the history books: Sir Jerner Truth, Harriet Tubman, Dr. King, and the millions who didn't. For those who marched, for those who prayed, for those who sang, for those who bled, for those who believed, and for those who died, I come as one but stand for ten thousand to the tenth power. This evening, I am representing those who were crestfallen by the vote that took place by the Board regarding the AP African American History course. Perhaps some of you would never understand or care to understand what you did last month and the message that I believe was made clear. As an African American, let me tell you what I believe was made clear. I feel that you don't want me here. I feel that you don't value the truth about my struggles and ways that I or people that look like me had to fight to overcome. I feel that you don't want the truth to be shared with our students. It is the truth that I was provided that pushed me and pushes me to be the proud Christian, American, African-American educator and human being that I am today. This was all because of learning the truth of the African-American experience that I learned in the Philadelphia Public Schools and while a student at the Lincoln University. Courses regarding the African-American experience should not only be taught in the inner cities and historical black colleges and universities. At this point in history, we should be in a better place with education so that our children can learn the truth in all schools. The truth didn't cause me to hate people or others who are different from me. The truth caused me to love even harder. Reverend Dr. Marlon Tillman stated, "The more you know about your history, the more likely you are to make changes for the future." And by denying African-American history, you are denying the potential of a future. When you deny someone the possibility of a future by knowing their history, you are also denying...
A struggle produces perseverance, and perseverance gives us hope and character.
Thank you.
Going down the AP African American History course as designed is one way that I believe the Board is supporting the political agenda
Thank you, sir.
of Project 2025, which eliminates African-American studies at all levels of education. I hear during the board meetings that we must eliminate political ideology. However, going down this course is supporting political ideology.
Good evening, I'm Mike Parker. I'd like to suggest the Board take a step back and reconsider your position on the AP African American Studies program. This nationally certified program by the College Board was generated by the academic leaders in this field. It is fact-based. I read all four hundred and eleven pages of this curriculum, including fact-checking the hundreds of references in the document. What I found, in my opinion, there is no ideological bent or motivation or thrust in this document. It is balanced factual presentation. Many of the facts are very, very distressing, but nonetheless, they are the facts. And the curriculum requires the student to take those facts, apply critical thinking, and reach their own conclusion. And to deny this opportunity to the students of Hartford County is something that ought to be taken with great consideration. Additionally, you know, it is an elective course. And parents are capable of making that judgment of how their student and their level of maturity and their level of critical thinking, and whether or not they're suitable for this type course. Thank you.
Next we have Rita Sharman, followed by Gina Tilley. Okay, next we have Joyce Boyd.
I'm Rita Sharman, and I'm here tonight to say I'm deeply troubled by the recent decision to cancel the AP African American Studies course. This decision impacts the high educational standards that this community has come to expect. This course offers students the opportunity to explore the rich and complex history, culture, and contributions of African-Americans, which are also an important part of our nation. These are things that are missing when I was in high school here. I went to high school here, so I know. Education is a powerful tool for fostering empathy, understanding, and unity. It equips our young people with knowledge and skills to navigate an increasingly diverse world. When we limit their access to courses that reflect this diversity, we do them a great disservice. We are essentially telling them that some histories and experiences are less important than others, which contradicts the very principles of equality that all our educational systems should uphold. Moreover, the AP African American Studies course provides students with rigorous academic challenges that prepare them for higher education and beyond. It encourages critical thinking, analytical skills, and a deeper engagement with history and literature. These are individual invaluable skills that benefit students regardless of what they do later in life. I urge you to reconsider this decision. I don't know why you did it. What is your expertise on the subject? And everybody has said this. Many parents want this. I've heard the Board's members say they want parents to be able to decide. Well, parents want this, and so they should be able to decide. Why this one? Do you not want that? I will end with a quote from Helen Keller. "The highest result of education is tolerance, and tolerance leads to unity." And that's something that your President of the Board asked for. Let's have it.
Gina Tilley.
My name is Joyce Boyd. I taught mathematics at Aberdeen Middle School and Aberdeen High School for a total of thirty-two years, retiring in 2023. When I was in second grade, Perryville Elementary finally became integrated. There were only three African-American families in town at that time. I could see their houses from my classroom window. They lived in a little row on the street. Originally, those children were bused fifteen miles to the Negro School in Elkton. But I remember the day Larry and Julius were allowed to join my class. Looking back, it still feels sad that it took so long. I spent much of my growing-up years at Port Deposit, swimming in the pool. Port Deposit, at that time and still does, had many African-American families, and their children were not allowed to swim in that pool. Imagine, hot days, watching a bunch of white kids splashing and playing while you were left standing on the sidewalk. I don't share these experiences to further division, but rather to enlighten. Unfortunately, those children were victims of a racist society. In the sixties and seventies, there was not much enlightened Black history. I learned about the Civil War, but not what slavery really was. I heard nothing about the Tulsa Race Massacre, where forty people were killed, eight hundred hospitalized, thirty-five blocks of a neighborhood destroyed. Not a word was in a textbook. This brings me to the most pressing concern. Where are our children going to learn about their heritage, good and bad, if we are not teaching it in our schools? They need to learn the truth and learn how to think in ways that are productive for all society. I see this canceling of the course as a huge step backwards in our educational system. As Eleanor Roosevelt said...
Morgan Reitz, followed by Reverend William Fisher.
When the National Socialist Party of Germany came to power in 1933, they began to do something that many authoritarian regimes do. They tried to rewrite history. They banned and censored many topics. The main blacklist included impressive artwork, classical music composed by Jewish composers such as Mahler and Mendelssohn. They also banned the works of famous author, War of the Worlds author, H.G. Wells, and For Whom the Bell Tolls author Ernest Hemingway. They suppressed the works of Albert Einstein, physicist Niels Bohr, Friedrich Freud, and sex and gender scientist Magnus Hirschfield. Today, many of the above creators and scientists are looked at as legends of their fields. Looking at these names is hard to understand why the Nazi Party would censor such important works and their authors. Well, with the power of hindsight, we can see that it was a ploy for power and control. It was authoritarianism. But at the time, I'm sure many of the excuses that they had were easy to understand. They make Germany look bad. They're not people we want teaching our children. It's divisive, and it's too political. So now that I've talked quite a bit about where you got your playbook, I'm gonna talk about exactly what you're banning. So what is critical race theory? To some of you, it's a weapon to use against you to make you feel guilty for purported abuses committed by you and some of your loved ones. To the rest of us who thought critically about it, it's a tool to understand our history through a different lens to better understand our present. And it's a tool to recognize how we all have our own biases and how those biases affect how we see and treat the people around us. And maybe that we can dismantle those negative biases and free ourselves and each other from discrimination. In Charles R. Lawrence's essay, "The End, the Ego, and Equal Protection: Reckoning with Unconscious Racism", he relates to the story of exclusion and detachment during an elementary school storytime as the only Black student that is not laughing at the main character of the story. The story is Little Black Sambo. He goes on to say that even as a child, he could recognize that his teacher was not trying to isolate him or alienate him.
Good evening, Board members. My name is Reverend William Fisher. I'm the pastor of Hosanna African Methodist Episcopal Church. If you're not familiar where it is, it's on Counciltown Road in Darlington, Maryland. I've been in Hartford County for almost coming up to two years. And it's not about Hartford County as far as what I'm going to say. I am going to limit my conversation to my testimony as an African-American male in the inner city, living in the city. I was the valedictorian of my class at Carver Vocational High School in Baltimore, Maryland. That afforded me a great education. I even had fun. However, the one thing that came out of that education was a disappointment to the fact that I did not get my African-American history. And it made me angry. And how many African-American men do you think are angry in Baltimore City? Come on, think about it. Some of the shootings are based on, they don't know. They just don't know. Here it is. My testimony is, I got angry, I got tired of white males, females, trying to tell me who I am. So what I do, I jump into Morgan State University. That was after twenty-four years of being out of high school. So when I got there, I was just floored for the simple fact I did not know that they went to ancient Africa to 1500. I didn't do history, too. However, I am going to go back. But I got what I needed, and I came out knowing that I was set free. I was set free. I got what I needed. So I don't need to go around being angry anymore. Approve this curriculum. Don't stand in the way of progress.
Thank you.
You heard the overwhelming evidence. Please, approve the curriculum.
Thank you.
Next we have Emma Peller, followed by Dr. So Harris.
Good evening, Superintendent Bolson, members of the Board, and thank you for the opportunity to speak with you this evening. I'm here to echo the voices of many of my neighbors who are here to ask you to approve the AP African American Studies curriculum. the AP African American Studies curriculum. While I didn't have the opportunity to take this specific course while I was in HCPS, I did take many other AP classes, which after taking the AP exam afforded me college credit, which allowed me to skip a semester of college, save lots of money, and graduate early. This specific course allows for students to gain more than college credit. African-American history has been and continues to be overlooked within history curriculum nationally and within HCPS, within my own class. That's not a discredit to any of the teachers in HCPS, but that's the reality. The history, African-American history allows our students specific context about historical events that play directly into the reality of daily life in America for so many people. It plays directly into the polarization that we're seeing that Dr., that Mr. Pointon brought up at the beginning of this meeting. And I want to add what was, has been said by others, that those who do not learn history are doomed to repeat it. I ask you tonight that you listen to the voices of so many in this community, of so many of your students who have been brave enough to spend Monday night in the summer and get up and talk in front of all these people about how they feel so strongly about this. And I urge you to reconsider your decision. Thank you.
I'm Dr. Sylvia Harris. I heard in the opening remarks, I heard that we are all equal, someone on the board mentioned that, and should be tolerant, tolerant of each other. African-American history is a vital part of our American history and should be a part of our equal education. The education of African-American studies is a bias against the community. That is, to exclude it would be biased against this community that has spoken out to include it. This seems to be the beginning of the white national movement that is proposed in the Project 2025 and being executed here in Hartford County. There is no discussion about the white nationalist texts currently in our schools. These decisions are biased and unacceptable in American society. Perhaps you didn't have all the facts before, but today, today, we have enlightened you. And I encourage you to reverse your decision and approve the AP African American course. Thank you.
Next, we have Jacob Bennett, followed by Jason King.
Good evening, Jacob Bennett, Harford County Councilman and kindergarten teacher. Proud to work for the best principal in Harford County Public Schools. You know, my number one issue is reading instruction. For those who don't know, we have the third largest racial achievement gap in the state of Maryland. We had the year before, we have this year, and without major work, we'll have it again next year. The simple view of reading says decoding times knowledge equals comprehension. Dr. Pointon said at the last meeting, he doesn't want to tell children what to think, but rather how to think. And while those are beautiful words, in the context of how our brain works, it makes no sense. Study after study has shown that deep and meaningful thinking is birthed from deep and meaningful knowledge. One such study I recently read got brain doctors and foot doctors. They had the brain doctors read a text about the brain and discuss it. They had the foot doctors get a text about the foot and discuss it. Then they gave the foot doctors the brain text, and the brain doctors the foot text. All of a sudden, they couldn't have as much of a deep and meaningful conversation because they didn't know the subject matter. Giving our children deep and meaningful knowledge of the world is messy work, and it means not everything we share is going to be positive. Only through understanding, though, can we do analysis. Edie Hirsch wrote in his books Cultural Literacy and How to Educate a Citizen about how we as a society have failed our children by denying them a rich and well-rounded education in science, history, literature, and art. Much of those removals of specific teaching has been driven by the fear of controversy in addressing messy topics. But Edie Hirsch argues it is the very act of denying such cultural contexts that we polarize our society. He speaks to how when we speak to one another, it's not just the words we say, but the words we fill in in between those words due to our own background knowledge that feeds communication. So by giving our children access to as many courses as possible, we are able to depolarize our society, but to deny them this access will only farther the divide that exists in Hartford County.
Next, we have Janine Canito, followed by Rodney Johnson.
Good evening. Board members are voted or appointed based on the perception that they will make decisions in the best interest of our kids. But this cannot be accomplished in the absence of due diligence. To competently vote on anything affecting students requires more than a cursory review of an agenda an hour before the board meeting. I witnessed a gross misinterpretation of history by a board member who defended Margaret Sanger in the June meeting. It's obvious those with my viewpoint are grossly outnumbered tonight. Doesn't mean the opposite view is right. I've witnessed a lot of grandstanding and angry rhetoric tonight, seemingly designed to intimidate board members. I want to point out that only three percent of colonists fought for freedom from England. It takes courage to count a groupthink in weakness. I challenge the assertion that there is a movement to water down history. It's quite the opposite. There is a movement to portray slavery as unique to African-Americans. Some reality needs to be inserted into this discussion. It is not unique to black Americans. There are few civilizations not guilty of this horrific crime, yet I saw no reference to this in the curriculum. Most African-Americans were sent to Brazil or the Caribbean. Our, our kids should not be taught falsehoods and propaganda versus truth. I caution the board members not to blindly vote for this curriculum. We need to be really careful about what we impart to our next generations because they are going to take that and, and impact our future. At a time. I won't keep talking.
Good evening, board members. My name is Rodney Johnson, and I'm a third-year educator and formerly a proud product of Harford County Public Schools. I will offer you a quote that probably our students wouldn't be able to read. "Not everything that is faced can be changed, but nothing can be changed that is not faced." James Baldwin. If history does not make you uncomfortable, you are not teaching it correctly. And I say that as an educator with thirty years in the classroom, as an AP teacher for over ten years. We are having issues with this curriculum, and I think back to my experience as a student in Harford County Public Schools. I don't know if it's still in the curriculum today, but I read Huck Finn, and Huck Finn was in the curriculum. The word nigger appears in Huck Finn two-hundred-and-nineteen times. Jim was a monstrous proud about it, and he got so confident, he hardly could notice the other niggers. Niggers come miles to hear Jim tell about, and was booked, looked up to the day other niggers in that county. I read that as a junior in Harford County in 1987, and I remember feeling really uncomfortable, but it was curriculum. So I ask you, if students of color, and every student, can read Huck Finn, then certainly reading about African-American history and African-American experiences is not a bridge too far. I urge you to reconsider your position.
Next, we have Leah Nguyen, followed by Addison Golding.
Hello, everyone. My name is Leah Nguyen. I'm a graduate of Belair High School, class of 2023. And I am here to express my frustration towards the decision to dismiss the AP African-American course. I ask you to reevaluate your thinking towards the diversity, equity, and inclusion classes, clubs, and movements. Aside from the educational benefits, this course offers a safe space for black history to be celebrated through honesty and transparency. The greatness of blackness and the impact we've had on this nation is so rarely acknowledged outside of February. Safe spaces are rarely found and hard, and even harder to create. I started Belair's first black student union, but years before, students fought for the organization but were denied. Therefore, having a college-level course, meaning it is advanced, intense, and truthful, celebrates the triumph of black America. Young minds that are interested in taking this college-level elective are yearning for a lesson on the black diaspora culture and its history. The privilege to learn about other minorities should not be stripped from students because older adults think black history is a bit too much for young adults to handle. There were talks of this course being too negative, but I'd like to pose the question, for whom? Because students have yet to start complaining. In addition, no other subject, Japanese internment, the killing of thousands of Native Americans due to colonization, the Holocaust, et cetera, do board members comment on the issues being too negative? And that's because as humans, we would never tell another individual their experience is not positive enough. So why, when the topic of black oppression comes to the table, it is too much for students? Although the teaching of African-American history, slavery, civil rights, voting, Jim Crow, begins in middle school, this college-level elective is the one course that pushes the boundary too far. Just because the reality of black Americans who are still oppressed today due to police brutality and access to care makes many uncomfortable, does not mean educators should teach the course through rose-colored lenses. Lastly, if the fear is that the course will pit black Americans against white Americans, America did that to itself long before the course was established. However, DEI activities help close that gap. However, whatever feelings awaken within students after experiencing truthful knowledge, I hope it changes them for the better. I pray for my future that my black truth is not silenced. Lastly, black people are not a representation of victimhood.
Good evening, members of Harford County Board of Education. My name is Addison Golding, and I'm a rising high school junior. I am here to express my concern about the decision to remove the AP African American Studies course. As a student who values learning and diversity, I believe that eliminating this course is not the right approach. While no course is perfect, and there may be challenges, simply removing it is not the solution. By keeping the course, many students will have the opportunity to learn about different cultures and broaden their understanding of history. Some might argue that teaching this subject could make some students uncomfortable or cause others to view America negatively. However, I believe it's essential for students to learn from knowledgeable teachers who can address their questions and provide accurate information. If we don't offer this education, students might turn to unreliable sources and misunderstand history. History won't disappear, and we have a responsibility to teach it accurately to prevent misunderstandings. As a community, we need to get comfortable being uncomfortable, whether we're in the classroom or making decisions about the curriculum. We all have something to learn from this course. Learning to be uncomfortable with the course is the first step towards understanding growth, which will lead us to feeling comfortable with the topic, with history, and with each other. So I urge you to change your decisions and vote for the course. Thank you.
Next, we have Devon DeFord, followed by Rain Curtis. Is there a Devon DeFord? Then we will do Rain Curtis.
Good evening to everyone except the five. I'm here to make a two-minute statement on behalf of Brene Dany or Jessica Frederick. As a parent of an African-American HCPS student, I'm truly disappointed in the Board of Education's vote against the AP African American Studies course. When researching the AP courses offered within Harford County, I began questioning why, why weren't the AP US study courses for AP World History courses up for vote as well? When reviewing the courses and taking your comments that the AP course was too political, I noticed that the following sections within other AP courses are being taught. In AP US history, you'll learn about the rivalry between the Soviet Union and the United States, the growth of various civil rights movement, and the economic, cultural, and political transformations of this period. Topics may include the Cold War and the Red Scare, America as a world power, the Vietnam War, the Great Society, the African-American Civil Rights Movement, and the youth culture of the 1960s. You'll learn about the advanced political conservatism, developments in science and technology, demographic shifts that had cultural and political consequences in this period. Topics may include Reagan and conservatism, the end of the Cold War, shifts in the economy, migration and immigration, challenges of the 21st century. Unit Five, Revolutions. You'll start your study of the period 1750 to 1900 by exploring the new political ideas and developments in technology that led to large-scale changes in government, society, and economies. If your honest concern was that the African-American course was too rough, vague, or too political, then I believe there should be an audit review of the aforementioned AP courses.
Dr. Pointon, that's all the in-person speakers.
Thank you. I know we had a couple of names we called that didn't get the chance to go, so if you didn't speak yet, if you, and you were on the list, if you could just stand up and come to the podium, identify yourself. Thank you. Are you the only one, or were there a few others?
I'm standing for Martin Tillman, for Bridge.
Yeah, we called, sure, we called a couple of names, so we'll give you the opportunity to speak in whatever order you like.
He took the people outside over to a church so they can observe. Good evening, my name is Constance Rosser, and I am a proud member of the Racial Justice Alliance of Maryland, which is a group of Christian churches here in Harford County who have seen a need to get together. We also are partnered with Bridge Alliance of Maryland, which is who Dr. Tillman represents. We wrote an op-ed response to what you said on the 26th of June. It has yet to be posted, but we will continue to forge ahead. One of the things I want to tell you is, we went to the schools, and we spoke to the children. I myself went to Joppetown, and what the children said was, I am now empowered, I am informed, and I am excited. That class was diverse, and they were there to learn. I had an encounter with a student from Enterprise, Alabama. I'm a proud graduate of Tuskegee Institute, and I was able to communicate with her about why I chose that school. In the fourth grade, I learned about a man named Booker T. Washington. What did he do? He lifted a veil of ignorance from his people. So I knew if I was there, there was something that I was going to learn. As my church bonded with other churches, we said we needed to know this. I made sure my children learned their history and was engaged in learning every religious event that was here in the county so they could respect people. We are glad to hear that Ms. Erin Lang, as the We are glad to hear that Ms. Erin Lang, as the supervisor of social scientists, has been working with us. We want you to know, education should seek to include two brands in purpose: critical thinking and moral development. Failure to do that will handicap our generation more. Thank you.
Dear Hartford County School Board members, I ask that you don't let the perfect be the enemy of good, as deducted from an old Italian proverb by French writer Voltaire. For those of you who supported the AP African-American Studies for a regular basis, thank you for seeing the value in its original proposal. But I was a bit dismayed by the comments of other board members, believing that this course was unbalanced with more negatives than positives overall. I do ask that before this board meeting ends today that you amend the agenda and take an immediate vote to actually have this course implemented on a regular basis. I submit to you that education can never be negative. The reason why this course is categorized under the Social Science Update as opposed to Social Studies because Social Studies prepares students for citizenship. While Social Science studies how society functions, Social Science is the study of human society and relationships through scientific analysis of human groups and institutions. Social Science topics include anthropology, sociology, psychology, political science, economics, education, commerce, and demography. There's hardly any idea that is not politically oriented. The argument that the world was flat versus round was political at some point in time. The United States Constitution is worth the activism needed to uphold democracy. So teaching on activism is a positive thing. The course is balanced beyond teaching about the progress of the country as well as on the great people in history. The course is intended to educate. The goal of education is to make progress, and supporting this course is initially, as initially introduced, is the best thing going forward. I ask that you reconsider this tonight on today's agenda, offer an amendment to the agenda to vote to support this. Believe me, your personal views should not take impact here. Think about all the people who want this done. Thank you.
Could you please state your name when you come to the podium? Oh, I thought you were coming to the podium. Okay. Is that it?
I believe if there is...
There was one person in the waiting room virtually, if I believe.
Yeah, is there a Kareem Wallace? You already spoke. Okay. All right. Thank you. Then no. That's it. Gillian has a virtual.
There is one?
Yeah.
Okay. Gillian, you may proceed.
Thank you, Dr. Pointon, and our second virtual preregister has joined us in the lobby, so I will have two this evening. Good evening. Phone number ending in 8412. If you can unmute your phone at this time, you are now in the Board of Education meeting. Before you begin your public comment, please state your first and last name. Your time will conclude in two minutes. You will hear a bell ring when you have 30 seconds remaining. Please introduce yourself, and you may begin your public comment now. Again, that's phone number ending in 8412. If you can unmute yourself at this time and begin your public comment.
We can come back to that one. Let's just move on.
Yes.
Oh, what is it? Is it like a star six, or is there something they have to enter?
Dr. Pointon, I will circle back to that. I have admitted phone number ending in 5253, and they are unmuted, so I'll go ahead and proceed with that number and then circle back to 8412.
Great, thank you.
You're welcome. So phone number ending in 5253, you are now in the Board of Education meeting. Before you begin your public comment, please state your first and last name. Your time will conclude in two minutes. You will hear a bell ring when you have 30 seconds remaining. Please introduce yourself, and you may begin your public comment now.
Hello?
Yes, go ahead, and you can begin your public comment. You have two minutes.
Oh, okay. I don't know if it was the right number. My name is Arvin Dafalhala Murray. I would like to say that because I might run out of time, I just wanted to take a minute to recommend Precious Knowledge, which is a documentary about a struggle over ethnic studies curriculum. It is from 2011 in Arizona, but so relevant for us here today. What pits us against one another is not the study of African-American history, but the silencing of it. What creates divisions is not the study of women's perspectives, but ignoring them. Forty years ago, when I was in high school history class right here in Bel Air, our teacher told us that in dictatorships, students were taught a cleaned-up version of history and were not allowed to criticize the nation, the leader, or to question the way history was presented. In contrast, they told us, we lived in a democracy where we were not only allowed, but encouraged to think critically and with an open mind about the past as well as the present. Listening to students today make such eloquent cases for studying history, it is clear that what makes history meaningful, exciting, and inspiring is its honesty and critical approach. Civil rights did not just happen by magic. Courageous activists who took great personal risk to challenge the status quo. If instead, we teach a watered-down, sanitized, feel-good version of such events, that is a recipe for making history class boring. Apparently, some board members found that the African-American Studies curriculum lacked positivity. What is positivity? Is it truly positive only to focus on what is good and right while ignoring the people who fought for those rights, the risks they took? What is truly positive is to have the maturity to look at history from the perspectives of those whose voices may have been suppressed in their time. What is truly positive is to learn from the strategies they use to overcome that suppression and to recognize that our society is always a work in progress, that we may need to use those very strategies to achieve the next big social change.
You have reached the two-minute mark.
To make our brighter day.
Thank you. Okay, phone number ending in 8412. If you can press star six to unmute your phone at this time. Again, that's phone number ending in 8412, and I think we have, we might have sound. So phone number ending in 8412, please be sure to introduce yourself, your first and last name. You have two minutes. You may begin your public comment now.
Hello, I am Bev Talbot, and as a longtime resident of Hartford County and retired social studies teacher from parochial school systems, I'm speaking to express what many have done tonight, and that's disappointment in the board's decision about the AP African-American Studies course. Let me just say, board members opposed to this course have shared that they felt that the content was unbalanced, pitting race against race, and thus creating a divisive environment. Having studied the curriculum, however, I'm in full support of it. The course has been shaped over the years by many eminent scholars in the field. However, hear me please, if some board members do see the curriculum as too unbalanced or divisive, which I do not, consider this. One of the objectives of the AP course is to foster critical thinking, and any good social studies teacher would encourage discussion to challenge perspectives that might appear unbalanced or divisive by some people, and thereby give students a safe environment to look at difficult subject matter. And actually, it is the College Board's philosophy that AP students are expected to analyze different perspectives to make up their own minds. As a high school teacher of American government, contemporary issues, US history, the same courses taught by HCPS, my class discussions naturally involve presenting different perspectives about the human experience, which has been divisive and contentious at times. We all don't think alike. The board has not advocated that these courses should not be taught because they may be too divisive. So let's not use that argument to not allow the AP course to be used. Trust your teachers. The curriculum is factual with various viewpoints from groups and leaders. Actually, it enlightens students to a more complete history of our country instead of dictating those whose history does and does not belong, and students of all races gain a deeper...
You have reached the two-minute mark. Thank you. And that concludes our virtual public speakers for the evening.
Okay, thank you very much, and thank you, everyone who showed up to give your public comments this evening.